I'm thankful to be here with each of you tonight. We are here because we value each of you. We value downtown Waco and are so excited to engage in the conversation we're going to have tonight. So a couple of things I wanted to set as some expectations for tonight. The first is that because we have more than two council members here, there's four of us here, and I'll go through each of them in a moment. We have to post an agenda and are restricted by Texas law by only talking about the things on that agenda. The things that we have posted to talk about tonight are infrastructure and public safety. So the way that we'll go about that tonight is talking about infrastructure. We have Amy here from the city of Waco. So she'll give a discussion on infrastructure. And then from there, we will engage in questions and have a dialogue about that subject. And then we'll move on to public safety. And we have our chief, Dr. Cheryl Victorian here, and Jeffrey Itarius from City Center Waco, who represents the Pid, who will give a discussion on public safety. And then we will engage in questions and a dialogue around public safety. So just keep that in mind. We're not going to be able to talk about arenas or hotels or painted sidewalks or unpainted sidewalks tonight. We can only talk about, well, unless it's in the context of infrastructure, I guess. So but we won't be able to talk about Oak Lodge Motel or other things like that that we might want to talk about that are deeply integrated into downtown Waco. We'll only be able to talk about infrastructure and public safety broadly defined. We have a couple of council members here. I want to acknowledge those representing District One. We have Andrea Bearfield representing District Two. We have Hector Sabido and representing District Four. We have Kelly Palmer. These are council members who deeply care about these issues, the issues of public safety, infrastructure, and more broadly, just the growth and healthy, sustainable growth of downtown Waco. They believe in the mission of downtown and they believe in the causes of which we're talking about tonight. I want to give a special thank you to Hector. He, one of the reasons why we're here tonight is Councilmember Sabido got several emails from some constituents in his district concerned about these issues that really touch all of our issues. And so it's with his calling that true to council culture of saying like, hey, well, let's have a discussion about this. Let's inform our constituents. Let's, let's have a dialogue. And that is true to all of our council culture. And again, these are issues that all of us care very deeply about. I want to thank, say thank you to our City of Waco staff and City Center Waco for being here tonight, to have prepared these remarks. And again, there's a lot of City of Waco staff members here tonight and City Center Waco staff members here tonight, too. Show of hands, who knows what the word boisterous means? Just kidding, don't raise your hand. It means noisy or rowdy, and it's what I have to say at the beginning of every council meeting to basically say, if you're unruly, we'll kick you out. But I say that tonight to say, really to set some, I'm not going to go through the normal council meeting diatribe that other council members up here know so well. But I do want to call for civility and respect. These are passionate issues, public safety in downtown Waco. The growth of downtown where many of us have invested time, money, our hearts, our passions, it's passionate. And so my heart, my hope is that tonight that we can remain civility and respect. I don't, I think we, I see a lot of badges here tonight, so I think we're covered. But if I have to deputize myself in lack of a sergeant of arms, I'm happy to. But I don't think it'll come to that. I do want to say really quickly, I have to leave early. We have a neighborhood association meeting in my neighborhood tonight, and my wife is bound and determined to be there. Plug for neighborhood associations, we're revitalizing those, so you can check those out for yourself. But I'm going to go take care of our kids in about an hour. So what's the goal for tonight? The city of Waco, I've said this, I believe this, it's a team sport. For downtown to be what we want it to be, we're all a team. Everyone in this room is a part of this team. And so my hope for tonight is that you can be more informed on the issues of public safety and infrastructure. We can hear from you on issues that are important to you, that are relevant to you, and hopefully will lead to a stronger, safer, more informed and more engaged downtown. So I can't thank you enough for being a part of this team, for being here tonight, for taking time out of a, you know, your Tuesday evening to be here. So I'm very thankful for you. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Amy, who I believe is the next on the agenda to start giving a presentation on infrastructure. Thank you, Amy.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting and glad to be here to be able to present and hopefully get some good feedback from everybody who's here today.
Amy, will you bring the mic up a tad? I think they're maybe not hearing you as well as I need to.
Is that better?
Everybody here, Amy?
No. Is that better?
All right.
I apologize. Okay, welcome. Thank you for coming this evening. I'm looking forward to having a good dialogue. The topic of infrastructure is what I'll be talking about tonight. This first slide is a plug for our Better Streets Waco website. On the Waco website, you can get a lot of good information about projects that are ongoing in the city. So I would invite you to go there and look at the projects that we have listed on that website. It's www.betterstreetswaco.com. You can find that, you know, just through your Google search. You can also get information on the city's website about other projects that are ongoing that aren't necessarily related to roads and streets. So if you go to the Better Streets Waco website, you can pull up this map. And this is the downtown area zoomed in, but you can go to any section of the city. You can type in your address and it will pull up the map in your area. And you can see what projects have been completed, what projects are under construction, what's planned, what's in bidding and what's in design. So planned projects are projects that we haven't yet moved forward enough to put them in design. So those are the ones that are further out on the schedule. So there are some current timelines for projects that are ongoing right now for streets and for utilities. And this is just a summary of them, and I'm going to go briefly through each one of these projects for you. The first one is Bridge Street. So that's the Bridge Street, the neighborhood porch downtown area from MLK to Mann Street. It's going to be our festival street. The project includes pavement, storm drain, sidewalk, streetscape, lighting, accessibility and a signal crossing Martin Luther King so people can get across safely. We are in construction and we're supposed to be finishing late in July. So you should see that project completed very soon. There will be intermittent closings of different lanes or parts of the street as we finish that construction. Washington Avenue Construction is going to be completed in November of this year. That's the project where we're taking Washington from a one-way street to a two-way street. And during that time, we will always have at least one lane of traffic open. So there will be intermittent closures at intersections for traffic signal work or for installing the ramps for accessibility. Dutton Avenue will be completed in January of '22. That is street utility and pedestrian improvements from 11th Street to 26th Street. And as I said, for the other projects, we will have at least one lane of traffic open and make sure that the road is passable for traffic. Webster is also going to be completed in January of '22. It's also similar pedestrian and utility improvements from 6th Street to 11th Street. The Elm Avenue project runs until approximately next July. There, it's a huge project from Martin Luther King to Clifton, involving street utility and pedestrian improvements and an entire streetscape. And like the other projects, we will have intermittent lane closures but have accessibility for traffic. Fifth Street under construction right now. It's another major project, won't be completed until January of 2023. But as they complete sections of Fifth Street, they will be opening those. So you may have noticed that from the post office out to Interstate 35 is largely complete, with the exception of the work that Tech thought is doing at I-35. So as we get that, those sections completed, they will be fully open to traffic. And we're working our way back towards Waco Drive on that project. We're passing over Franklin Avenue right now. Franklin Avenue improvements were planned to be conversion from a one-way street to a two-way street. We initially thought we were going to start construction of that in mid-2022, but we have put that project on hold right now. We wanted to have the opportunity for all of these other construction projects to get completed and for the two-way conversion of Washington to be completed and for Interstate 35 to get completed so we could give traffic some time to redistribute and make sure that we're making the right decisions with the work that we're doing on Franklin. Fourth Street is another project that would parallel the project that we have on Fifth Street. That project, we are in design right now. We're holding at the 30% stage because we don't have funding for that project. So we're thinking maybe late 2023, but at this point in time, we don't have a firm date for that project. University Parks Drive has multiple projects ongoing. We have the Riverfront Development Private Project that's going on right now. We are also designing street and pedestrian improvements for that area for after that development project is finished. We're at about the 30% design for that. The Utilities Department also has projects that are ongoing on University Parks, including sanitary sewer from Webster Avenue to I-35 and a 36-inch line from Washington Avenue to Webster Avenue. The thing that's important to note about the 36-inch project is that the Washington Avenue Bridge will be closed from mid-July to about mid-September because they're going to temporarily reroute the line across that bridge. So that bridge will be closed to traffic for that period of time. So the news, the basic takeaway from U Parks is that there will be intermittent lane closures for all of these projects for the next 24 to 36 months in that area. And not necessarily in the downtown, but always of interest to people is the 17th Street Bridge. You may remember that there was a fire in a warehouse under the bridge that did some damage to the bridge. And we've had one lane closed to traffic to keep traffic off of that section of the bridge. We're at 95% done with the design for the repairs to the bridge, as well as some other minor repairs that were identified in the last frequent inspection report. So we are going to go to construction for that project in the fall of 2021, and we think we'll be completing it in the spring of 2022. There are some future planned projects that we don't have timelines for yet. But just to let you know what's in our back pocket for the future, we have Austin Avenue continuation from 11th to 19th, Dallas from Elm to Herring, Taylor Sanitary Sewer from MLK to Douglas C. Brown, and Bridge Street Sanitary Sewer, Pleasant Street to Myrtle Street. So again, here's the list, the timeline list for the projects. The last slide was going to be any questions? Maybe we just want to leave this one up and see if anybody has any specific questions. For questions, I'd invite you to come up to the microphone and ask your questions so that people who are attending the webinar will be able to hear your question.
My name is Vernon Davis. I live at 323 North 7th. Primary question right now is during the sanitation project on Washington Avenue Bridge, will that still be open for pedestrian traffic during that time period? Since we already have, of course, suspension bridge closed and we have limited pedestrian walkway on the Franklin Avenue Bridge. And I'll hold any other questions if we can find out a little bit about that. Thank you.
So I'm not sure yet whether or not that that will be open for pedestrian. I think that wouldn't be a problem. It is really just a large bypass line that needs to be rerouted that direction across the bridge over to MLK Avenue while that work is being completed on the sewer line. And so it is something we're certainly open to exploring. And I'll get you a more definitive answer when I talk to the engineers about that.
I'm Andrew Lopez, District Two. My question was putting off Franklin Avenue project. How is that going to affect the transportation that we have set forth in the comprehensive plan?
It shouldn't have an effect on that. We're at a good stopping point for Franklin Avenue. We're also trying to see about how to coordinate that with the Bus Rapid Transit project and to make sure that they work well together. So we wanted to take a little pause on that project so that we can make sure that we fully understood the impacts of the BRT as well as how traffic redistributes itself after Interstate 35 is completed.
And when do you plan to start the rapid transit for the city of Waco?
I, that project is under consideration with Waco Transit and their consultants. And I'm not sure what their exact timeline is for that, but they are currently working on it.
Good evening, Andrew Stakely. I own several businesses downtown. Yes, one of my questions was about holding off on Franklin Avenue. But my second question is, I'm not seeing up here concern of mine with floodplain issues, but it relates to major to infrastructure. The drain is just going to come off of Waco Creek. I've been told that that's going to be a big undertaking on Mary to get that water out. And I'm just kind of curious what the short to long-term plan is about breaking up Mary all basically.
Amy, why don't you, why don't you take that one? And I'll, if you'll talk about the stormwater the council's adopted, because I believe that's one of the early projects planned for that. And I'll clean up if I need to.
We, we recently adopted, well, last, last October, City Council adopted a stormwater utility fee. We started collecting that fee this coming October. And we did identify along these floodplains that we studied about $123 million worth of capital projects that, that we need to fund and complete over the coming years. So dealing with that infrastructure and drainage is one of those projects that's, that's on our, our capital program list. I don't, we're not at the point yet where I have time where I can provide you with a timeline for that, though.
And I think to put some additional context on that project, a diversion tunnel, like what we have running under Webster currently, I'm going off memory. I think that was a $40 million project of the $123 million of investments needed for stormwater. It was approximately a third of the entire stormwater fee. It's a, it's a very major undertaking and we shouldn't anticipate it'll be there very soon.
But you do not anticipate it being there very soon?
No, it is a, it is a tearing up, basically building an underground street that crosses every major thoroughfare that conflicts with utility lines that we're in control of, but also private utility lines at Atmos and telecommunications. It will be a number of years before we take that on.
So that's not on the active plan, as it relates to what we're doing? A lot of these projects will be completed before that Mary.
Absolutely.
Just stating that. I know there's much hotels going down Mary. I know there's emphasis on the city to get those down before those hotels start construction, but it's not on the radar.
No, we know we want to do a major drainage improvement. We have a few options on, like Mary is certainly one of them. There's other options in Waco Creek. Like, we need to go through a full analysis of how do we get there to move water? But it won't be done, like if, if we're imagining that Mary is going to be fully developed in a pedestrian-connected way, really nice and pristine, we don't want to do that and then obviously tear it up by building an underground river. So it'll have to be, it'll definitely have to be thought through timing-wise.
Thank you for being with us. I'm Randy Cox of Little Rock South City Street. Appreciate everything you do for us out there. I noticed there's no information about anything about Sixth Street, which is in pretty bad shape. Guys are pretty good walkways now, looks really good. But is there any activity that's going to take place to improve Sixth Street?
Jim, do we, do we have anything on the program for Sixth? Do you know?
Right now, the street program, what we're doing, we're putting a five-year comprehensive plan together that will accommodate all the streets in downtown and the streets all across the city of Waco. End goal is that we do take care of some of those streets internal like six that we have to spend maintenance groups out on a routine basis to take care of. You know, we've got a lot of activities we have to take care of across the city. And the best thing we can do is make sure that our maintenance forces are not spending all their time on one or two streets. Sixth Street is one of those. So it is in the queue. We're looking at it. We're going to figure out what to do with it and make sure we do the right thing with it. But it has so many stakeholders involved in that whole work. So it is on the radar. We have to do a little bit of paving, work in downtown, so Sixth Street from Franklin over to about Columbus, we're going to be doing some paving work. But I'm sure you're talking about that area from Franklin, I-35. Yes, sir. And no question, our maintenance group is out there way too much to take care of that. So it is in the queue. We are looking at as part of that five-year plan. So it'll fall within that.
Jim, really quick, while you're, can you just talk really briefly on what your process is to identify what streets need to be repaired? Because I think that it's just helpful anytime we can. I know it's not just related to downtown. I think there's, you're very methodical about that. And I know that this could be an hour-long conversation, but if you could condense that to a minute. Was that, and if you could come to the mic really quick, Jim? And I'll just remind anybody who's speaking, please come to the mic for the sake of those watching on the, online.
So yes, from with the payment program, you know, our ideal goal is to try and take care of those assets that are in good condition. But we don't own something that fell from one condition to another because it's very expensive to defer assets, as many as we have. We have 630 to centralize miles of streets that we have to take care of. Keeping those assets in a good condition where you spend maybe $5 a square yard versus $130 a square yard, we believe that's the right investment. We also look at neighborhood association meetings. So we try to attend those that are, sorry, COVID kind of put the pavement group, the Better Streets Waco group, a little bit behind. But end goal, we want to be in your neighborhood association meeting. We believe those are extremely important. They give us a little bit of guidance of what your needs are as citizens in this city. So that's a big player. And then behind that, we have arithmetic-based formula program that our council invests in. I think it's a great program that tells us every street segment, what the value of that street segment is, what needs to be done on that street segment. And then it kind of puts it in a best value, what you could spend a dollar and get the best value return on. So it puts a list together. But I can tell you, community feedback, neighborhood association meeting, and us taking that goal. I think Amy opened with it, you know, the right street at the right time, trying to keep those assets that are in good condition, in a good drivable, you know, road condition. I think that's, that's the key. But your voice, I have probably about six to eight phone calls a day to my office. I welcome anybody. We can't do the type of job that we have in this city without your feedback. So your voice helps guide us along. And then when you use the tools that behind that on the engineering side, the guidance where we spend the dollar the most efficiently.
Thanks, Jim.
That's a short word.
Mr. Stakely, do you feel like your Franklin Avenue question got answered? I just want to make sure that, did you have a more specific question than the previous guy, Mr. Lopez, who's before you? Or? Okay. If you have any, if you have any, we've had robust discussions about this at council on the why and the what and the how for Franklin Avenue. So those are available online and happy to discuss that if anyone asks questions. Any other questions on infrastructure tonight? Very good. And with that, I think we'll transition over to Chief Victorian, who's going to begin our discussion with public safety.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Cheryl Victorian, and I am the newly appointed chief for the Waco Police Department, effective March the 15th, 2021. Thank you, sir. Thank you guys very, very much for being here. I love the engagement. I love being out when we have our community meetings. I'm so glad that we're beginning to open back up so that we can further engage with our community. I've been having a great time learning our city, learning our department, meeting with our community members and identifying issues and trying to determine how we can best address those issues with our resources. So tonight, I'm going to go over a few things. I'm going to go over my overall vision for the city as the police, as the police chief, talk about some statistics in the downtown area and then some of the strategies and partnerships that we have developed. Next slide. My overall vision for the city of Waco and the police department, as big as it may seem, is to be the model city for public safety and community police partnerships. And I believe that it can happen. I'm not talking about us being on a national television show or anything like that. I'm talking about us doing things that are so significant that people want to call us and see what's going on in the city of Waco to see if they could do the same thing. So what does this look like? A decrease in crime, increase in cooperation, solve crimes. And we know that when we develop that public trust, that we get more cooperation from our citizens to help us solve crime and to help up, come up, help us to come up with strategies, innovative strategies to address crime. Community sharing and caring, making sure that we're keeping our community informed, whether it's via social media or inviting you over to the tower or having you participating in some of our programs, making sure that we're using technology to the best, the best of our advantage. And then as well as being guardians and teaching you how to reduce victimization and crime prevention techniques. We'd also like to reduce the fear of victimization. It's nothing like being out and about and hearing about crime or watching the news and then wondering if you're next. So we want to make sure that we, we want to be cautious, but we want to make sure that we're reducing the fear of victimization. Also, working together on preventive and intervention strategies to reduce crime and criminal behavior. It's not just a part of our responsibility to be reactive, but it's also a part of our responsibility as a law enforcement agency to be proactive in developing strategies to help prevent and intervene in crime when we see specific things going on or notice different methods of operation or different individuals or different areas where crime is being committed. It is up to us to work in partnership with our community to make sure that we address those crimes. And then also partnering to mentor and support and guard our youth. Since I've been here, it's only been a few months. A lot of the crime that I'm seeing is involving our youth. So I'm interested, I've already talked to some of the leadership in the Waco School Districts, in the Waco School District to see what we can do to get involved as mentors and guardians to be proactive in addressing some of that behavior. And then also, we need the community's assistance to increase police legitimacy through engagement. I know everybody knows what's going on across this country. And I think engagement is the key to us building trust and to building those community partnerships that I, that I'm talking about. Next slide. So we want to end, three of my priorities for the city, of course, one is public safety and making sure that we are reducing crime and the fear of crime. But number two is increasing the number of positive interactions that we're having with our community. And we want to do that through a concept called relational policing. And we have, I brought relational policing with me. It was introduced to me when I was in Houston by Chief Asalbado, who had come from Austin. And he put together a video and he started talking about this acronym T R E of transparency, respect, engagement, emotional capital, accountability, and all of that leading to trust. And, and he just kind of threw it out there. And I took hold of that and I was like, this is significant. This is what we need. We're always talking about community policing. We need to talk about building relationships for us to be able to build that trust so that we can adequately perform community policing. So one of the fundamental principles of relational, relational policing and our commitment, and this is, I got with our graphics team and they designed this beautiful slide with our officers engaged in activities that support relational policing. And we've come up with this philosophy. Relational policing is a philosophy focusing on principles of creating genuine cooperative relationships between the police and the citizens of the Waco, Texas. Waco PD is committed to making every contact count by being transparent, respectful, engaging, building emotional capital and being accountable to earn the trust, to earn the trust of our citizens. So we want to make sure that we're increasing the So we want to make sure that we're increasing the number of positive interactions through, uh, the tenants of relational policing. So what I want to do now is go over some of the citywide stats. I know that this is a major concern. We can't come to a neighborhood meeting or a town hall meeting and not talk about what's going on across the city. So one of the things that I would like to talk about first is overall crime stats for the city of Waco. I'm not sure if you guys can see those numbers, but the number one concern is always what? Murder, right? Um, we've had a total of, well, nine at effective yesterday, nine murders in our city, um, which is an increase of murders that we've had on, that we had last year, year-to-date. Uh, but the, really no good news when there's a murder. Murder is one of the crimes that is just hard to predict, right? But the good news is, is that we have suspects identified in every murder that has, that have occurred this year. Two of those have gone to the grand jury. We have seven arrests and, um, six of the murders, uh, two arrests with one. And then we have an exceptional parents because there was a murder-suicide. Um, so murder is usually the big thing, right? But overall, we have seen a five percent decrease in violent crime year-to-date. And year-to-date means January to May, uh, twenty twenty-one, January to May for both year twenty and year twenty-one in that comparison. So compared to last year during the same time period, we've seen a five percent decrease in violent crime. But we've seen a three percent increase in nonviolent crime across the city. Uh, with a total of twenty-six incidents, I mean, but it's three percent. Any increase is, uh, an increase and nobody wants to see an increase, right? Um, so let's look at the specific crimes specific to the downtown area. And I was really pleased when I, uh, reviewed these stats before we started today. Overall, um, we've seen a twenty percent decrease in the downtown area in violent crime, and we've seen a fourteen percent decrease in nonviolent crime. So we're trending in the right direction. In nine, in twenty twenty, uh, downtown contributed to seven point three percent of a total nonviolent time crime that happened in the city. And then in twenty twenty-one, we're at six point one percent. So we're doing very good. Uh, as far as violent crime is concerned, in twenty twenty, um, the downtown area, the number of calls that we received related to violent crime uh, was eight point two percent, and this year we had six point nine. So again, we're still trending in the right direction. Just to talk a little bit about some of the strategies and partnerships that we have. I know that there are a lot of concerns on the downtown area with, um, our mental health, homeless popul- our homeless population and mental health, mental health, um, crises, uh, and instances that we have downtown. So we have a, a unit, it's called the Career Criminal Apprehension and Supervision Team, and we call it C-CAS. And I don't know, we had a recent success story a couple of weeks ago. I'm not sure if you guys saw it on the new, but, on the news, but let me give you a little background about this unit. Our unit, the unit initial, um, priorities were to make sure that we were addressing those individuals that we ran into the majority of the time. Those, that small percent of people that was causing the majority of the issues. And what we found was a lot of those people had mental health ill, uh, issues. So our units, um, partnered with a lot of the agencies in the city of Waco, um, Waco Connect, MHMR, Centacor, Mission Waco, uh, and The Hangar, to see if we could meet the social needs of these individuals because it was just a revolving door. Uh, we'd arrest them for one thing, they'd be out in a couple of days, and it, the, the cycle would just continue because they had social issues that needed to be addressed. And with that, we've had a couple of successes, and I believe one success at a time, uh, is a success. Um, so we are, our unit is now working with Waco Connect, and we're going to, we've been approved to have a social worker to work with our, um, C-CAS unit and to be able to identify the specific resources needed for those individuals that we come in contact frequently. Their responsibility would be to support law enforcement by linking community members to resources that address mental health, substance abuse, and, uh, related social needs. They'll conduct social need assessments to determine the type of services and resources that are needed. Um, and also facilitate services for high-needs individuals across all involved in, um, systems of care. And, uh, I have also have an opportunity, I'm not sure if many of you know, uh, we have a new homeless project coordinator, and I just had a, uh, the Zoom meeting with her a couple of weeks ago. So we're looking forward to working with her and coming up and developing strategies to make sure that we're addressing the, the problem appropriately and of providing people with, um, the resources that they need. Um, our C-CAS unit, they develop action plans, uh, which include counseling, reintegration, and reab- rehabilitation program, programs, uh, they are very, very active, um, they know who the frequent flyers are and, um, their, their needs, and, uh, we try to address those needs so that we don't see them involved in that continual cycle. Additionally, we have a new unit that has been approved called our Neighborhood Engagement Team. The Neighborhood Engagement Team will be five officers and one sergeant. And our Neighborhood Engagement Team will now be our links to our different communities, different, uh, neighborhood associations. And they will be a liaison between the community and the city of Waco and our resources, um, including serving as navigating partners to the community by connecting everyone with government and non-governmental resources. They'll be organizing, coordinating, and attending our community and neighborhood meetings, um, and working with the Office of Neighborhood Engagement. They'll be gathering the crime stats and reviewing the crime stats and working cooperatively with our communities and developing crime prevention programs and strategies, uh, using problem-oriented policing and other innovative strategies. And they will also be organizing, uh, coordinating and attending the department and city of Waco sponsored activities such as Nat-, such as National Night Out and involved in, uh, the engagement activities that we are, uh, developing at the Waco, uh, Police Department. We have one upcoming, I hope you guys have heard about it already, we're starting to market it, um, in August, on August the seventh. We plan to have a back-to-school bash, um, getting involved in our community, inviting our kids to our community, have a big party, increase the number of those positive interactions, and we invite our community to join in with us as we, um, build that trust and that engagement in our, uh, community. The fundamental responsibility of, of our net unit would be to demonstrate the philosophy of relational policing and earning trust. Uh, we will focus on engagement activities with the intent of building that emotional capital that we need uh, with our community stakeholders and working with our city leadership as well as our residents. So that's what I have for now. I'm going to turn it over to my buddy here, Jeffrey, uh, with the City Center Waco, and he's going to talk about some of the activities that they have going on, and then we'll redirect for questions and feedback. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, so I'm here representing the Downtown Public Improvement District. Um, and if we can go ahead to the next slide, I thought I'd just start with a brief introduction to what Downtown Public Improvement District actually is. It is a additional assessment of about ten cents for a hundred dollars evaluation on downtown properties. Um, and so these revenues are collected in addition to other taxing entities like the city, the county, uh, the school district. Um, and because the, the taxing, the, the assessment comes from property owners, the pit, there's a advisory board made up of fifty percent plus one of taxable acreage and taxable value. And that's the, the Pid Advisory Board that kind of guides and directs, uh, the Public Improvement District. Just for context for size, the fiscal year twenty-one revenues were six hundred, uh, six hundred five, six hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars or so. Um, and we're talking here about clean and safe services, and that was about fifty percent of those revenues going to clean and safe services. So we can go ahead to the next slide. Uh, so the Clean and Safe Services, the Downtown Public Improvement District provides reporting, landscaping and maintenance. And what that looks like is some sidewalk, kind of clearing that area from sidewalk to road, cleaning up the paved alleys, dealing with the planters that you may seen out, and then trimming all the trees in downtown. We also have a security patrol nightly. Then we deal with bird remediation and abatement, which is trying to get the birds out of the trees and then dealing with the messes that follow them. And then we also deal with graffiti abatement. Um, and I'd just like to take a little bit more time talking about reporting. If we could jump forward to the next slide. Uh, this is kind of the secret sauce of our work. Um, you may have seen, uh, depending, you know, how often you're downtown, you may have seen our, our clean and safe specialist out in his car patrolling downtown each and every, uh, each and every day, uh, each and every weekday. Um, if you do happen to see him, feel free to wave him down. His name is Dave, and he is very friendly. Um, and I'm sure he would, he, if you have any clean and safe problems, let him know and he can get it to the right place for you. But as part of the reporting, we can go ahead to the next slide. Downtown stakeholders can also be a critical part of, uh, us figuring out where there are issues downtown. So we actually have a public-facing reporting method. Um, if you go to our website, downtownwaco-tx.com, you'll see there's a services page. And on that services page, you can, there's a link to what you see up here, which is our public reporting forum. Um, if you report something into us, you should receive an email with a little code, and you can track that issue as it goes through our system. Now, full disclosure, there are some issues that take a while to solve. Some things are real easy, some things take a bit of time, but we will let you know what's going on with the issue. Um, if we can go ahead to the next slide. This is a year of reporting. This is approximately June of twenty twenty to June of twenty twenty-one. Um, in that year, we recorded three hundred and forty-nine instances that were resolved. Of those, two hundred, over two hundred were graffiti. We had a lot of graffiti downtown, um, and we're happy to say that we've cleaned up a good amount of it. Um, we can go ahead to the next slide. So this is, um, a chart of graffiti instances downtown from that May to May timeframe. We excluded July of twenty twenty because that's when we started taking pictures of graffiti on dumpsters, which there's a lot of. And so you can kind of see, we had a nice downswing there into the winter, um, but it in recent months has come back, and we are trying to stay as on top of it as humanly possible. Um, we can go ahead to the next slide. So I want to make sure, I want, if any chance I get, I want to make sure to note that we have a graffiti abatement program which provides free cleanup of graffiti on buildings downtown. What we need from property owners is their consent to clean it up. Um, so if you own some property downtown and haven't had a chance to fill out one of our graffiti abatement release forms, please let me know and we will get you one as quickly as we can. Um, we have found that the faster we clean up graffiti, the less graffiti we get. So if, if we can get your sign off, we can get our painters out there, our power washers out there and get it taken down, uh, pretty, pretty quickly, um, if, if we have that consent. And that is what I have on clean and safe services. And I will return it to Chief Victorian for questions.
Thank you very much. Again, we appreciate everyone being here. Um, if you have any feedback, uh, by all means, please stand up and, uh, talk to us about that. If there are anything that we can help you with tonight or at a later date, we'd be happy to.
Hey, Jeffrey, can I ask you a quick question while Mr. Lopez is walking up? You said that if, if business owners need the graffiti abatement form to contact you, what's the best way to contact you?
Oh, yeah. You mentioned that. Jeffrey, J D F F R E Y at citycenterwaco.com.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, sir. That's true. Uh, you can also stop by eight oh one Elm.
First of all, thank you so much for being part of Waco's crime and looking forward to seeing where it could be. One of the things that I had was involved with, like, starting with downtown Association of Advisors was I had taken a look at the crime and the areas that were being addressed. I took the, uh, I guess the, um, the notion of we need to figure out a better way of looking at this. So what I did is I mapped out our area and I color-coded a lot of the crimes being committed each month to have a better visual so people could see. You have your list that shows the crimes that are being committed, and in the back part, you have the streets with these crimes and the dates that they've been committed. I wanted to take it a step further, and I produced that at the apartment back in two thousand fourteen. And believe it or not, Colleen took advantage of it. And now you can go to Colleen's, uh, website, uh, this website, and every month they post a visual, just like you showed where a crime or graffiti was located in. They have the same type of situation or posting. They have shown all the different crimes, what streets they were on, and they're color-coded the type of crimes. The reason I said, you know, we're now media, uh, looking through our computers, seeing things, and I think the visual showing, uh, exactly where we are, uh, to our residents, I think would kind of give them a better idea. Hey, this next to, really next to us, or that's further on down. What I did find out by it, that was the pockets that were really hot and which ones weren't. And it gave us a better indication of where our police should be controlled more. That was, uh, some time ago, and I just want to kind of share that with you to see if someone like that would have done. As for City Senator Jeffrey, we've done a fabulous job working there. And, uh, the only thing I can say is that our neighborhoods really sought out of the pit. And I know that we had, I think you remember this, Megan and I had sat down and did some extensive mapping, and we came to a point that ten cents for a hundred thousand. And that really didn't go about because a lot of the business owners didn't want to participate in that. But the neighbors, we were looking at about six to seven dollars a year more in taxes. They have additional things to be done. And the reason I bring this up is because the pit and the amount of, uh, tourists that we have there, a good percentage of those people live in my neighborhood, but we're not part of the pit. And a lot of the parking is in my neighborhood, which is not part of it. So we don't get the benefit of the pit and the protection it provides, but we do get population that's come here. And I'm not to say that the tourists are causing any problems, but we have a large amount of people coming to an area. It does bring criminal elements to that, see if they can rob, open cars, that nature. I don't think we've had a large problem with that, but I really would like to see the city consider addressing or allowing some of the things that you cover in the pit district overflow up to eleven, all the way to I thirty-five. And, uh, I guess Seventh Street is where the pit ends. It's soughting, you guys.
It's like.
It's soughting that. I could never understand why you didn't want to cover that area because that is really the highest concentration of crime that we have. It's going to be right there in Cleveland, Eleventh Street, all the way up to Seventh Street to be declared. And that's a part that's sought out. We try to do something to, uh, be part of that, but that didn't materialize. And I'd like to see the city maybe take an interest in doing that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name's Emma Beard, I live in District Four. I just have some questions about some of the policing programs. We think that, uh, C-CAS and the Neighborhood Engagement Team seems like positive steps forward, but it also does sound like, um, some, somebody mentioned there were social workers. And so what does our partnership with social workers look like? I know we just approved a massive budget item for, for public safety. Can we be told or guaranteed that these funds are also going to be going to these programs? Hopefully, with the ability to bring in more social workers and a cross-section of leadership to help train our public safety officers.
That's a great question. So the position that I'm talking about with the C-CAS unit has already been designated for that unit, and it's one position, um, with a social worker joining that team to, uh, connect us with the resources to help us with the issues that we've had with, you know, mental health, addiction, and those persons that we see frequently. The other programs with the Neighborhood Engagement Team and, and our C-CAS unit, who's working with the social workers, will also, will use those resources to our advantage, but there is not a current plan right now to, uh, add additional social work. Hopefully in the future, there will be something we set that's successful and we can build off of that.
So what are, I guess specifically for the Neighborhood Engagement Team, what does that training look like? Is it a cross-section of leaders training, or is, is it just developed police officers?
So it's, uh, it's going to be holistic, right? So we're going to have officers that are assigned to different neighborhoods in the city. So we're going to have officers that are assigned to different neighborhoods in the city. And we want to work specifically with neighborhood associations to identify what those, what the issues are in those areas. And we want to make sure that they are trained in the resources of the city of Waco so that they can just be resourceful with whatever that need is.
It's really good to see the positive trends in crime decreasing. But I guess the past year, it makes sense that maybe they would, would lock down procedures in just the nature of the past year. Is the data compared to twenty nineteen changing positively? Could twenty twenty data be considered an outlier?
So I do not have the data for twenty nineteen in front of me, so I can't give you.
I know you're right.
Yeah, but I mean, you, you have, you raised a great question, but I will tell you that crime just across the country has increased, both violent and nonviolent crime in the last two years. But again, I don't have twenty nineteen numbers in front of me, so I can't give you a comparison. Thank you. It's good to be here.
Just to piggyback, City Manager Ford, correct me if I'm wrong, but the crime stats can be found on the city's website from years back.
Yes.
We do have those online. Yes, sir.
Thank you so much. Just, I mean, if people are interested in going back and looking at it, they're available.
And in line with that, I, I want to bring some attention to the work that's been done with the behavioral health team. Is that on? Can y'all hear me? I'm quite loud anyway. But I think that, that the work that we've done with, the city has done in partnership with our other safety partners, the police department, the sheriff's department, several nonprofits, to work to strengthen and align our behavioral health team to work in tandem with the public safety officers. Is that not something that is, is being developed as we, you know?
Currently.
Chief, you want to speak to that?
Oh, so.
The answer is yes. We've got a multi-year history, as council members well aware, but I'll let Chief speak to it.
Well, I only have a little bit to say about that is that I am now a member of this behavioral health, health team of individuals from across the city and have had the opportunity to go and meet some one-on-one and learn more about how we can address, better address our behavioral health issues.
Because I think that, that allows us an opportunity to, and I'm the daughter of a social worker, so I totally get it, how, how it allows our wheelhouses to, to, to join. Because, you know, when we, when we intend, you know, policing is, is, is one, but one aspect of how we build and develop as a whole, you know, and while we fully understand that, that, that there does need to be connectivity in that, especially in the advancement of the, where we're going in the world today. There has to be some other people working in to toe this line. And I think that, that with the development and, and increased footprint of the behavioral health team, it does that, you know, so that the people who specialize in that can lead that conversation, but then work in relational perspective and, and in tandem with the people who are leading safety.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy, I'm glad to hear all these programs. I think it's, they're great initiatives. I guess I just hope and would love for you to take into consideration this massive budget item that just passed for public safety. I would love to see dollars used in earmarked to grow these things, to get more social workers involved. I know we're not here to talk about the budget, but as a public safety piece, I think that there's this intersectionality of people that should be involved in that. So I hope that that's being considered and our money is being stewed, stewed in a, in a way that involves a lot of different things and things that maybe we haven't checked out yet.
Well, one thing that I will tell you is that I have met a couple, with a couple of our organizations here and we're talking about training, because you mentioned training briefly. And to have them to come in and develop a curriculum for us to show to our officers on best practices and approaches, on resources throughout the city that we may not be familiar with. So we are in discussions with doing that for our next training cycle that's starting September the first.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
My comment is on the downtown pit situation you were talking about earlier. As an owner of multiple properties that are in the downtown pit, really it's frustrating to me to see money spent outside the pit, advertising businesses outside the pit, delivering people downtown to businesses outside the pit, trolley. I'm all for expanding the pit to include these areas. So I think it's more money that brings money into the larger circle. I just want to get on the record about saying I don't think money should be spent outside the pit on areas that aren't donating to that direction. The advertising website, the downtown trolley, taking customers from downtown to the uptown area and other things like that. I think it's a misappropriation of funds. It was expanded in those areas. I think that there's a lot of people in the general area that are all for that.
Let's help this down just a little bit. Thank you so much, council members, City Staff, Chief. Guys, we just want you to know, we appreciate as a community, you listening to us, you hearing us and then acting on it is amazing. So just a few things that I was chosen as the voice of a lot of people on this road. If you guys want to stand up, we basically call ourselves a subcommittee of the downtown health neighborhood. And we are owners of what we call Silo District Lodging, Airbnb, STR homes in that area. And this is a very small portion of us. And we just wanted to give you guys a little bit of information that may help in some of the decisions that you're making. And I just want to commend you for really looking at the core of these matters to help get to the core of it, not just the end of it. So we are all enthusiastic about helping any way we can in getting on any types of committees that can help give information, any of the programming that we can contribute to monetarily or physically. We want to be involved. It's a little difficult sometimes to really determine how can we be involved. So I just have a quick list and this is going to just drop off some papers here at the end of the table that you guys can pass down. It's a quick list of some things we didn't want to take up very much time and I'm just going to run down through these. But one of the things that, that we really, really want to, to say, who are we and we, what voice do we have in this city of Waco? Sometimes this, and recently, I guess I should say, the short-term rental owners have gotten a little bit of a bad rap in some of the areas and these zoning changes have significantly impacted where these are going to be allowed. And we actually have a great district for those in the silo district right there and District Two, Hector's very aware of that. And since that is the concentrated area that these can be utilized and this property can be utilized in that way, we really wanted to hear some concerns and some things that we would like to put forth and be, be of assistance to you in making this better. So who are we? We just want you to know, we want to provide a pleasant gateway experience to the city of Waco. We want to provide a unique and compelling home or apartment environment, which provide a home-centered hospitality experience that allows a guest to shop and play and enjoy their time while they're in our city. So we don't just classify ourselves as tourists who come to the silos. We have done this for four years now on the corner of, it's actually six eighteen South Seventh. It's called Urban Miracle. My husband and I own that. And then these are all homes around that area. So on the corner of Clay and Seventh, not only do we get just Silo District residents, but are people who want to come to Waco, many, many neighborhood families come to that location, many, many come to, yes, our cable parks stay in that location. I mean, it's, it's amazing. We have people from Sweden and Alaska and Maine, all over the world. Over two hundred and five reviews. We have a five-star rating on Airbnb and beyond Waco. It didn't just start yesterday. So we just want you to know that some of these things that we've experienced going as well as all the people that are here that also have these STRs of that area. So what, we don't want to just be compared to the hotels or looked down upon by the hotels or the community. This provides a significant service to the city. And unlike a lot of other ways, when people want to come and visit Waco, if you go to Carta Texas Waco and look at it, it doesn't give you any crime statistics. It doesn't tell you how many murders are or anything like that. But if you go to Airbnb and you look at reviews, it says, I was scared to death walking in the street. I was scared to death getting out of my car. We don't want those reviews. We don't want that to happen. And I think where we are in the heart of this matter right now really promotes Waco as a safe environment if we can continue to provide that and kind of clean up maybe some of the things that are going on. So why are homes uniquely matter on that second paragraph there? They provide that one-of-a-kind experience for people who aren't going to stay in a hotel. They actually walk the neighborhoods. They walk to the businesses. They use the city infrastructure to get over to Baylor University to get all around town. It's a great economic impact for the city. If you, I'm sorry, I don't have these stats, but if you look at those numbers, just the property tax increase for that area with the STRs, not to mention the sales tax, hotel motel tax for the county and the city and the state, there's significant numbers. And I would love to have those stats for you. I'll bring that up at a meeting some other time. We, as operators, drive a significant economic value by paying those, those taxes and those additional fees that we pay there. And we have intensely, very intensely generated a much better community in that area as far as upgrading and renovating dilapidated properties, one at that, one house at a time, one street at a time. I think Hector can attest to, the district's looking pretty cute over there. So the single businesses of, you know, hotels, I know they add to a lot of places that people can come and stay here. As you know, if you've ever stayed in an Airbnb, it's a unique experience. It's a very heart-earning experience that you spend with your family. It's not just a bed and we even come back. It's a fully, fully inclusive Waco experience that we really, really love. So in offering that, we want to just make this better in that neighborhood. A few things that if you look at the back part of that page here, we just listed some things about my help and we're sort of focused on ideas that we can actually begin to, to make changes with. We've all added extra lighting on our houses. We've all added the streetlights that you can see. We've added ring doorbells to try to help, you know, understand, you know, the traffic that's going on in the area and able to document things that are going on and to try to help curtail some of that activity. But in that process, these are some things that we feel like may help. So as you had mentioned with maybe C-Stat or some of the other things that are going on with the, Chief Victoria actually mentioned, increased foot traffic, bike or subway patrols in that area would be maybe with a dedicated shift in the evenings or just a dedicated shift for that area. That presence has made such a difference in so many other cities to transition those, some, some of those areas that have had that loitering or different type of trespassing issues maybe that have happened. Improved street lighting, I don't know if we can figure that out in a minute. We have them on our homes, but if we could add them actually on the street, we think those streets, six, seven, eight, nine, all the way to eleven there, the K-Balls, Clay would be amazing. Any of that street light would be really great. Any of the broken sidewalks could, that could be repaired to make it more pedestrian friendly would be, we do those in the renovations of the houses, but in between those areas would be great. Focus to make it more of a walkable neighborhood, ensure that the rental properties actually in that area, which are familiar. This city has a couple of housing projects right there on Tenth and Clay. We need that property to either have an onsite manager or someone that is really enforcing the same rules that are enforced as property owners and STR owners. We have commercial inspections. We have to meet certain criteria with our yards. We have to meet certain criteria with our guests. Not having guests that are not supposed to be there. I own Trilogy Group Real Estate Company here. I've done that for thirty-five years. And our main thrust is management. We manage a lot of housing properties that we take sectioning housing on. We are required to have inspections on those properties annually. And we're also required to make sure the residents living there are on the lease. What we're finding here, there are people living in those properties that are just occupants, that somebody's letting them stay there for an extended period of time. And I think that's where we're getting some of the traffic that maybe isn't supposed to be in that area. So some more really, really detailed rules for those housing, housing projects and managers, I think would be significant to help maintain that. I'm happy to help in that area if I can. I actually have a little bit of experience in that area. And then to enforce district policy, that anyone maybe that's caught trespassing, I know they go and I'm not exactly sure what happens when they get caught trespassing. But maybe if they had to go to a class or do community service, I got a ticket when I was in high school and I had to go work and do community service so that I wouldn't be on my record. Maybe there's an option there that we could permit, you know, provide some kind of classes or, you know, involved in that at the ground level to try to keep that to continue happening. Couple of the people had actually asked in the, in the group here to discuss possible train noise in that area. I know that's a safety situation. I don't know what the answer to that is. But when they have their forms going really, really loud at midnight, it is a little bit of a deterrent to that area. But I, I don't know what the answer to that is, but if there's something there we could discuss. And then if it's possible to add parallel parking lines on Clay, that was another thing that we wondered if that was a possibility because people all park up in down Clay and in down Seventh and Eighth. But if we had some designated lines, maybe it would be a little bit better than kind of haphazard how it is now. And then an increased branding and signage of the Silo District area and maybe a monitored Waco safe neighborhood. Because, you know, most of the neighborhoods have signs that says, you know, you're in the Rucatay District or you're in the, you know, whatever that is. So it was a Silo District and then it's monitored. Sometimes that signage, we feel like helps people maybe be a little bit more and maybe even a phone number that they could call if they noticed something in the area. So these specific patrols that maybe are designated, if our guests who came to Waco were able to see a sign or we had our information on our, some people came in, if you need anything for your here, wanted to be a lovely stay, call this number. If you see any suspicious activity, call this number. Not just nine one one, but someone who knows that neighborhood and knows what's going on in that neighborhood. And is familiar with the programs that we could actually put in place to help stop that. Now, all that's done here, so the last couple of things is the public relations that emphasizes that unique qualities in the neighborhood. So I know we have a Carta Texas website and some different ones. We really want to enhance the advertising of that area. We could brand it as Silo District Lodging and actually have some advertising there. I think that brings to the community what everyone's looking for. And I think that it also gives it a better presence, not just a segmented community down there. So I think that there's a lot more that could be involved in that as well. And then finally, the communications, which we really appreciate, we just want you to know between the city and you. This town hall is a perfect start. If there's a way, and I know the neighborhood association needs help as well, but I think having a voice and a direct contact for those neighborhoods, and maybe I'm just not aware of that, but I think that that helps just immensely to be able to continue the communication efforts and to also say, this is working or this is not working. Or could we try this or can I help with this? And I think some, some D mark, some point that we could actually contact would be a great asset to, to the community there. So finally, my last little thing, I'm on the board for Art Center Waco. Hector's on the board too. I, I was responsible for finding the location for the art center, which is seven oh one South Eighth. This is one street over from that Airbnb. We are thrilled and excited. Our building's going to be finished July the thirty first. It's such an asset to the community. We've been here over forty years. We have such a legacy. We will be bringing in international art exhibits. So where you would normally have to go to Dallas to see a Chagall, a seven hundred fifty thousand dollar painting, it will be housed in the art center. We will have exhibits for those. We have to make sure our people are safe coming in and out of this community, beautiful community asset. It's going to be their public space on the background venue space. It's going to be a very awesome destination in addition to what's going on currently in that Silo District. So we want to make sure that we're creating this community, not just for the STRs, but for all of the community assets that are in that area. So a little plug there for the art center and I'm, we raised over two million dollars for the art center to be there. If we need to get involved in raising some funds to create this environment and what we need to make this safe, we are all worked through that. And however, that's where you can get in touch with us. Hector knows our group and he can get in touch. Hector knows our group and he can get us all pulled together. So, thank you for hearing us. Any questions for me?
I'll just say, thanks for thoughtfully putting together the guide here. It's very helpful. I think any, any question I would have would be to that last point of, I think we need to get a team of maybe Chief and a few others to visit with you and talk about some of the specifics you've raised and work from there.
Thank you. We really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
I will say, Lisa, thank you so much for coming and speaking to me. This is the ideal way that town hall meetings should work where there are issues in the neighborhood. But city is also working to come up with resolutions for those issues, but also that we hear from the neighbors and the, and the people that live. So, you know, Mr. Lopez and Lisa and Dana and Ryan and everyone who I've had the opportunity to chat with over the months, Shane, or the opportunities to chat with over the months. I really appreciate how you guys are invested in our community. You want to see it thrive and grow. And so, please, I encourage you, please keep the ideas coming and keep the thoughts coming, because I agree with City Manager Ford, we want to keep this dialogue open, not only between staff and council and you guys, but something that hopefully can utilize throughout the city and really get to know the needs and wants of the community. So, thank you for, for putting this list together, and I promise we will. Looking, I will say one thing about the quiet zone. You talked about the railroad. I know that that's in queue right now, you know, so it's taken a little longer than we would like it to, but I know we're at the mercy of, of the Railroad Commission. But I, just so you know, the quiet zone should run from 12th all the way to Peach Street, correct? Councilmember Bearfield, I think it's going to all the way to Peach Street. So, it'll include a lot of the parts that, that you guys represent. So, thank you for bringing that up.
Hector, I have extra copies of this and I can leave them, just on the end of the chair if anyone wants to.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I'm sorry. Everybody thought it was over. My name is Jesse Lee and my wife and I just moved to Crest Road over in Carolina. Been in Austin for about 30 years. Glad to be in Waco. We got a Baylor a long time ago, and we're back here. Love it. Thank y'all so much for your word of making it such a great place to be. Chief, I'm excited that you're here. I know that you worked with and for Chief Osfato, who was one of our favorite people in Austin during our time there. Great police chief, had a great community impact. Being, being in the community in such, for the chief, I know, I see you around town. I'm proud of you. I'm happy you're here. I have a question, being new to Waco. I want to make sure I understand that the relationship between police force and PID, as far as public safety goes, you know, Chief covers the violent crimes and kind of the big stuff. And then the PID, I guess, covers, I mean, I hate to use words like incident, survey, conceit or anything like that, but, you know, it's kind of the non-violent, you know, people throwing rocks at windows and those sorts of things. Is that what it is supposed to do in their safety aspect of it? I might have to say that one. Thank you all for the thanks.
Welcome back to Waco. Chief for Jeffrey, y'all want to take that?
Well, the police department, we're gonna handle anything that's criminal. So, whether it's a criminal mischief or somebody throwing a rock at a window and damaging a window, that's gonna be us. Public Improvement District in coordination with us, because sometimes when we have graffiti on walls and if we have a gang unit that can identify who that came from, or if we can associate it with something or have video, then that can turn criminal too. But I think, Jeffrey, and I'll let you speak to this, is, is making, if we can get rid of it, if we don't have any leads or anything and we can make, get rid of it and make our city look nice and not give them anything to drive on when they pass by and see that their mark is still there, then that's what these guys take care of, but I won't let him handle. But we handle everything that's criminal. If it's gonna come up criminal, it's us.
And, and that is exactly right. So, we do have a security patrol. If they come across anything, they're calling PD. There are, our kind of security position is presence alone. That's, that's it. They're, they're there to be a presence and to be eyes on the street, so if something happens, they can call PD. And then beyond that, as, as Chief Victorian was laying out, we, we deal in kind of cleanup and, and, and maintenance rather than kind of direct engagement in the public safety situation.
Any more questions that we could answer or we could help answer? If not, then I think at this time, well, first of all, I want to say thank you so much on behalf of our city council, city staff. Thank you for being here. Please know that we are available afterwards if you have questions. I would like the opportunity to give my fellow council members, Councilmember Bearfield or Palmer, if you have anything that you want to say before we close.
Thank you all for coming. It is imperative that we, we continue to grow and advance together. When you say things like downtown, I don't know that anybody has perspective that you actually touch three districts. And so, as you're including in two and for your side, four for your side, one for my side, we're all aligned in, in the advancement of the one downtown area, which is a majority of Waco districts, as well as the Ring Neighborhoods that it connects and our city as a whole. We can't do any of this independently. So, having opportunities to, to stop for a minute and address your concerns are what we're here to do and what we're here for. And so, we appreciate you all taking out your time in, in, in making sure that we're clear in the direction that we're going, so that we can do the work that we need to do together, so that we can lean on our exceptional staff that we have to see, you know, the visions that we cast, the needs that you have addressed and met. So, I am exceptionally pleased with our, 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 our team. And that's us and you all. So, we appreciate you for coming out tonight and saying things that need to be heard, making sure that if, you know, if there are questions, I hope you don't leave with them unanswered. And if they are unanswered, I just need them to be temporarily unanswered. And so, if it was something that we need to move forward on and find more information, then you hold us to that. Because that's, that's our job. And then if we can't have a solid, we'll come back and we'll do it again and we'll get your questions answered. Because again, team, right? So, you know, thank you all for gathering this. Thank you for City Secretaries Office for making it, it happen. And I'm just, you know, ready to continue to move forward and build. Councilmember Palmer.
Oh, switch chairs. To echo both Mayor Protem and Councilmember Bearfield, we are just so excited that y'all are here. You are our bosses. We each have somewhere between 25,000 to 30,000 bosses. We're here because we desperately love the city of Waco and we believe in her growth and we believe in her people. And we are all very accessible. So, whether you want to email us or slide in for our DMs or get coffee with us, know that we want to hear directly from you. You are all the experts of your own experience in town, and we're eager to build a Waco that is more equitable and brings everybody to the table. So, thanks for being here. Mayor Protem, you want to bring us home?
Well, everyone have a safe trip and thank you again. Take care.